Personnel priorities, one of those the board started last year, which is the establishment of an IT director position. We had half a year's funding in for this current year, and so we'll pick up the second half of funding in next year's budget. The state, the school system, they have a state budget shortfall. If you remember, last year, the state enacted a grocery tax, and as part of that, they were trying to hold harmless impact on school systems, and so the schools are dealing with that potential issue. Salary, salary increases that were proposed at the state level, of course, there were corresponding local match requirements for us, and not every position is covered by state salary increase. The capital improvement items, and I'll say our public safety pressures, our volunteer fire departments are getting squeezed. It's tougher for them to raise funds. They've seen increase in insurance costs, partly because the cost of the vehicles has skyrocketed. You know, when you're spending 750,000 to a million dollars to buy a fire truck, it is certainly, you know, is driving the cost of existing vehicles up, and then the replacement cost that they do get in accident is up, which is pushing the insurance up. And our communication system, which unfortunately, I heard tonight, we've got a repeater down, I believe, down on one of our towers, but they're working to get that addressed. But in the long run, we need to look at the upgrade of our communication system. Increases, decreases in budget revenue. Our real estate basically was stable. We've got it plugged in at 8,750,000. We'd build 8,630,000 in FY23, so it'll be up slightly, and that's with the new home construction. Again, our personal property, we've estimated that to be down a quarter million dollars. We will also, we'll look to return to our actual PPTRA. Last year, when the values skyrocketed, the board gave a portion of that back to taxpayers through the PPTRA, so we bumped that percentage up. So we'll go back to kind of normal rates this coming year. Our sales tax numbers have eked up again from 3.5 million to 3.8 million. We've added 20,000 to increase our transient occupancy tax up to 75,000. We've got a meals tax number plugged in here. We haven't gone through a full year of meals tax implementation yet. We just started that this year. The commissioner's office has been collecting some and mailing letters and trying to identify businesses in the community that will be paying that. We've estimated that at 200,000. That is slated to all go towards school capital improvements per the direction of the Board of Supervisors. And then FY24 includes our last library project payment when the new library was built. I know it probably seems like just yesterday, but in next year, you'll pay that off. Personnel cost, we've included a 5% raise for county employees. That costs us 356,438. It's partly covered by comp board positions. Those are positions like deputy sheriff positions, position in the commissioner revenue and treasurer's office that are covered, the court, circuit court office that are covered by comp board. Does not include all the positions in those departments, but includes the comp board-funded positions. As we've talked about, the state has bantered about a 7% increase from five to seven. Again, we won't know the final answer on that until the budget amendment comes through. We have an extra 2% set aside that if, if the governor and the general assembly give that raise, the board will be in a position to act and do that as well. School system's kind of in the same boat. We had a 3.2% health insurance increase budget. We'd actually budgeted five. We were able to back that down. And then we've had a handful of merit increases as requested by the constitutional officer or department head. Additional positions, we, we've got a part-time receptionist position that's in this year's budget, still unfilled. In the plane department, we've got that full-time IT position and a part-time registrar position. If you remember in our budget discussions, the registrar position really is us changing a registrar official to a county employee position. It's going to save us money. For instance, when we operate a, the polling precinct here in the building 45 days in advance, if they're a county employee, you can operate that with one person. If you're using polling precinct personnel, you'd have to have a minimum of two. So in effect, that saves the county money by being able to do it that way. Sheriff's office, we bumped our overtime increase from 120,000 to 175,800 per the request of the sheriff. That's not a one-year job. We've been trending that way for a couple of years, but you know, part of, I think, what impacts the sheriff's budgets are when you've got holds at the, at the hospital, and you've got to have staff to be there to, people have been, you know, committed, and they've got to provide that coverage. You can't just walk away. You've got to be there and staff that. Their equipment maintenance, that's a lot. The radio system and other equipment has gone up from 85,000 to 95,000, and vehicle maintenance is up from 54,000 to 75,000. I mentioned fire and rescue pressures. We had a request to our public safety committee to increase our volunteer fire department contributions from 74,800 up to 85,000. We ultimately settled on 80,000 with the look to come back next year and take that back up to 85. Beginning last year, we started picking out fuel for all our volunteer fire companies. We've had to increase that slightly from 35,000 to 40,000 in next year's budget. And then we've got $100,000 set aside for debt service eventually for our communication system. That's not enough to cover the estimated cost, but what we're trying to do is start building that debt service number so that in a couple of years, we're in a position to be able to replace that equipment, replace those radios, and upgrade the system. Again, IT department, about 40,000. We've got 50,000. We're hoping this year, this will be the second year we've got funding in there to start our comprehensive plan update. Comp plan should be updated every five years. I believe it was around 14 or so when it was last done, but then COVID kicks in, and the county really wasn't able to have public meetings and get our comp plan done. Now COVID behind us, we're hoping to get that started. We've got funding to go from a six to a four-year cycle for real estate reassessment, and I'll be presenting at the next meeting, contract for the board to consider to move forward with our reassessment. Legal services, we bumped up from 50,000 to 75,000. Regional economic development, this is the same amount that's in the current budget, but I know we're, we're talking with the Commonwealth Regional Council about an initiative to basically work together with our regional partners, the counties that pulled out of the other, David helped me with for a second. Our, our last economic development initiative, Jeffrey, what was the name of the organization?
Re.
Not, it was a redo, but yeah.
Yeah.
But we're looking with our other counties, including Buckingham, Cumberland, Amelia, Notaway, and Lunenburg, and Charlotte, to work together. You'll think of it in a minute.
We'll admit.
Our school capital improvement funding, one of the things that we'll talk here in a second, we're trying to get in a position to be able to move forward with our elementary school project based on our current, current schedule. Mosley Architects is anticipating being able to have plans to go out to bid later this fall and be in a position to bid that project next spring. It still would probably take a couple of years to complete the project, but we want to stay on target with that. And again, I mentioned the meals tax. We're estimate that 200,000. It could come in higher, it could come in lower, but that's what we've estimated year Solid waste, we've got some funding. You know, eventually, we're looking to redo the entrance and pay that going up to the scales and reconfiguring that at the landfill. We've got some funding in there for a new scale house, basically a modular office trailer to replace the one we currently have. We've got 20,000 in for construction vehicles plus the current lease payment on our, our new loader. That's 100,224. The CIP, a couple of years ago, when we rolled back taxes from 51 to 47, we left it up four pennies. That number was 608,000, the current year's budget. We went through the cuts. We had to cut that back to 508, but those are funds that are helping us do things like the Rice Convenience Site and some of the other CIP projects we're working on. We've got funding in the budget for engineering, 200,000 for engineering for Sandy River, legal services, and also the debt service. We'll talk about that to get that project underway. We've got contingency funding of 121,094. Our estimated state revenue is included in the budget. Our outside agency increases and recommendations are included in the budget. Again, we've got 5% increase included for staff salaries. Two of that sitting in pay raise reserve if and when the governor and the general assembly take action to change their recommendations. School funding, the school has identified positions, and they need an early, additional early childhood special education teacher at the elementary school, or receptionist for an office staff at the middle school, additional physical education teacher at the middle school, school psychologist to shift from 11 months to 12 months, it's a full-time at the middle school and the high school, a part-time psychologist, and a structural, a structural mentor for special ed, contracts for bus monitors and bus aides for three of those. Salary increases as proposed by the state, 7% would cost 1,342,417. They're also looking at some state and federal funding decreases, in part because of the enrollment numbers, seeing a slight decrease in enrollment. The local funding increase that was requested, this was based on what we call the more conservative of the budgets, the House budget, was 556,907. You know, originally, the schools had asked for a half-step increase. That was about another 900,000 through the budget process. We were not able to include that in our, our final budget, proposed budget, but we did meet what they requested. I think the hope is that they either get one of the governor's budget or the senate budget, the school system could potentially get some additional dollars from the state. But again, we've gone with the most conservative budget, so the board knows in advance what its commitment's going to be for the coming year. We also know there's going to be some additional CARES Act, some federal dollars. We'll have the board consider and appropriate those at the time we know what the final state dollars look like. Again, this chart, I know it's hard to read, but basically just sums up those different positions and the 7% raise that were included from their request. This chart, and just, so if you look at, this looks at really the last 10 years of funding from state and local sources for the school system. If you look, our 2022, 2023 budget number was 10,148,308, and of course, we're going 556 over that. The year before, it was 9,255,574, and the year before that, 8,793,062. But that gives you a look at historically for the last decade, how Prince Edward County has been able to fund its schools on the local level. And at the bottom, it looks at the salary increases. And you look, there for a few years, they had 1%, 2%, 1.5%. The last few years, you know, we've done 5% each. We also did the half percent step increase last year, and this year would be proposed a 7%. So again, made pretty good progress the last couple of years. The unfortunate part is, so have most of the other school systems. So you haven't really gained any ground, but at least you've tried to kept pace of what's going on. So again, when we got through all the budget requests, we were out about 2,100,000. And to close that gap, we added in some state revenue increases. We reevaluated our local revenues and tweaked those where, up where we could. We have used about half a million dollars in fund balance for, for one-time items. These are things, I call it, you're dipping into the saving account to buy a car. We're not dipping into the savings account to pay salaries. That's not a good fiscal move and things we don't want to do. And we also cut and trimmed items from the budget based on the board's priorities established through the goals. Our, again, emphasize, the budget, operational budget was balanced on the current personal property and real estate tax rates. But we have advertised and included in the budget a 3-cent increase for the Sandy River project and a 1-cent real estate increase for the Prince Edward County Elementary School project. Each penny represents about 175,000 in funding. I know folks out in the audience can't see this, and, but one of the advantages and something I think frankly, we're working with the Virginia Resource Authority to look at our funding our Sandy River project, the board's commitment to move upfront with a 4-cent real estate tax increase now gives us a lot more latitude down the road as far as when we're going to need to make some additional adjustments. And I also passed out tonight all different analysis, and this is one that actually VRA asked us to look at, was, okay, you're doing 4 cents, 3 cents for Sandy River this year. One of them looks at, what if you, what would it take if you did something next year and the year after? Well, it would only take a 3, a 2, and a 2, so a 7 cent total versus a higher number for just that product. So again, lots of different ways to slice the apple. The other advantage we have is we'll have a reassessment in the year 2025 potentially, and then obviously a reassessment in 2029 when we're looking at some of these other increases. So we'll have some additional opportunities. One of the board's stated goals is, again, to keep taxes low and may, be competitive from a real estate tax standpoint. This chart shows the tax rates of our existing tax rates of our surrounding jurisdictions and the proposed tax rates. Again, you'll see, I think at 51 cents, we would be, I'll say tied for the third lowest in our region. One of the things that we like to do is compare ourselves with our, our neighbors also. It's called the State Comparable Report that anyone can go online, and you can see last year and previous years. One of the difficulties this year is four of our surrounding jurisdictions have not completed their audits yet. So instead of looking at eight counties, we looked at four. But in comparing us versus Cumberland, Lunenburg, and Notaway, and we're fourth out of four, so the lowest expenditure total at 2283,25 per capita. We are lowest in educational spending for operations at 1306,72, and lowest in correction and intention at 149 per capita. We're third out of four in general government, public judicial administration, public works, healthcare, law enforcement, fire and rescue, community development, public support for the libraries. And then we're second out of four in parks and rec and cultural resources. Again, based out of our advertised rates, we're tied for the third lowest in the region. I think when you look at those benchmarks, we get a lot of value. We're not spending a tremendous amount on our services. We're getting pretty good value for the dollars that you are investing in our community. With that, Mr. Chairman, I've completed my presentation. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions, and if not, then I'm sure we've got some members of the public here who would like to address the board.
We'll open up the public hearing. We've had several people sign up. The first one, Peter Gurr, please.
My name is Peter Gurr. I live at 113 Woodland Trail. I thank the county to increase tax to help the schools and to start a Sandy River Avenue and project, but I do have two comments, two concerns. The first one is about the elementary school. So recently, the school has had the traffic problems. I believe the problem is caused by the shortage of parking space, especially at the elementary school, we don't have enough parking space. So my, my proposal is, when you renovate the elementary school, it's better to expand the middle school parking lot to produce much more space. So before the school, school day starts, the elementary school parents can drive to the new parking space. So it means you will tend to ride. So you don't want to compete with the school bus at all. So after the school day is over, so the parents also go to the parking lot. So, so let the school bus pass first. So going to safe, the parents can walk across the street to bring the children back. The second, and you started the Sandy River project, that's a very good project. So if it works in the long run, so it will benefit our county and the other counties. So right now, I have a concern. So you only carry out from the Sandy River to Crewe in Notaway. So I think, I believe you will start, or just, we just do the whole project, we just also include from the Sandy River to Hammond Sandy College. That's my opinion. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gurr.
Thank you.
Next, Eric Hodges, Lockett District, please.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Eric Hodges, I live in Rice, Virginia. I came to speak in support of the 4% property tax increase. Primarily, I was thinking about it from the, the improvements that could be made to the schools. I know in the most recent strategic plan, that was listed as one of the top priorities for the county, was to improve the elementary school and the schools in general. You know, I moved to Prince Edward County four years ago, and it's been a great experience for us. I have, I'm married, I have two small kids, I've got a, a seven-year-old who's currently in second grade, and I have a four-year-old, and she's going to be going into kindergarten next year at Prince Edward County. So obviously, I'm biased when we're thinking about improving the schools. But you know, that has been the one point of contention that we've had living in Prince Edward County. It's, it's been a great experience for us. It's close to our families. We, we love the community, but the school system, the schools are a struggle, right? Oftentimes, my daughter will come home and she's just, she's not having the best experience. I know that they're, they're taking steps to improve things at the school, but they need more help, right? So I guess that's why I'm, why I'm advocating for this particular tax increase to help us make those renovations. I guess the, the one question I had, I wasn't aware that 3 cents of it would be going to Sandy River and 1 cent going to the schools. So I'm just, I understand that Sandy River is going to be a revenue generator for, for the county, but you know, I wonder, could that, could a, perhaps a bigger portion of that money go to the school project as opposed to Sandy River? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges. Next, James, I believe it's Gee, Gee?
Mr. James G.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors, my name is James G., and I'm standing before you this evening on behalf of the Prince Edward County NAACP. I want to, first of all, tell you what a marvelous time we had last month when your county administrator, our county administrator, addressed our monthly branch meeting. He did a fantastic job. All of us were pleased with his presentation. I would also like to say that when Mr. Stanley came to our community, he asked to speak to several of our branch members, and we have had several occasions to meet with him. And each of those occasions have been positive meetings and a good step forward. At our meetings, we told Mr. Stanley that we were concerned with three basic things: broadband, public education, and Sandy River, and maybe there was a fourth, education. We told Mr. Stanley that we thought all of those things meant a brighter future for our community, and we are so glad to see the progress that he has made, that you all have made with regard to broadband. We're glad to see that we are working on Sandy River because, as I told Mr. Stanley, I thought water was the new goal in America, and those who control water control their own future, and it was best for us to take a stance with regard to Sandy River. We also come this evening, though, to support the proposed budget that you have advertised. Most of the membership in the local branch are gray-haired like I, are on fixed incomes, but they still understand the importance of supporting public education, and they believe that we need to be great innovators with public education in our community and stand ready, willing, and able to assist the board in any way we can to make sure we have the best public education division. We believe that we're on the right track, and we hope that this board adopts the budget that has been advertised because we believe it will meet all of our needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. G.
Good evening. I'm Justin Pope. I am a parent of two Prince Edward County students, one in third grade, one in fifth grade, and I just wanted to lend my voice also to support for the investments that you're considering in the schools, improving the schools. Obviously, very important on the substance, but I just also wanted to say, I think it will send an important signal, this budget will, to a lot of important people. One, to Richmond. I know in Richmond, they're still trying to get their act together, and they're also debating whether to give us additional tools to help with the urgent capital improvements we need in our schools. This budget shows them, you know, we're willing to do our part, and will also, I'm sure, be asking for direct funding for support, you know, for that down the road. It's a message that we can help, that can help reinforce the idea that, look, you know, we need, we need help from Richmond, but just give us the tools. We're willing to do our share as a community. I think that's very important. It's an important signal to parents like us, many of us here in the room tonight. We want to be helpful in the schools. We see hard things, but also some really good things happening, you know? Test scores are up this year. Two Prince Edward County High School graduates were named Goldwater Scholars, one at Longwood, one at University Mary Washington last week. That's a remarkable achievement. I'm not sure how many high schools in America can say that. So amidst challenges, there are good things happening, and there are parents who are eager to be involved, but also want to know that they're not alone, that the community is, is also willing to do its part and recognizes the value. I think it's an important signal to current and future teachers. As we all know, it is a struggle to recruit and retain teachers. When you're considering coming to work in a school district, if you see that the county and the population are willing to invest in, in facilities and make, make repairs, it's an important signal that your work is valued, and it will be an important tool in that regard. To our students, as we all know, young children are very perceptive, and they see what is important. They see how adults, adults behave and what they value, and to have, to begin to take on these repairs so that we have school buildings, particularly elementary school, we couldn't be proud of, will signal to them that the work that they do in the school building is also important. To businesses and families that are considering relocating here, you all have heard me make this point before, but I'll, I'll say it again. The most important economic development tool that we can invest in, in a community is a, is a signal that we care about education and about our school facilities. Anybody who's thinking of moving here, just as we did 10 years ago, will drive by the schools, and they will make judgments about the level of support for a community based on the physical condition of the schools. So what happens in the schools and what the buildings look like really, really matters if we're serious about recruiting and retaining businesses and families to come here. To all of our citizens, this is a, a message that, you know, the schools are collective responsibility, that we're all in this together. And lastly, I would also just like to echo Mr. Gee's, Gee's comments. I think it's a strong signal of support to Doug, who has done a tremendous amount of work to figure out how we can make progress, particularly on the school capital needs. I know this is not the whole ball of wax. I wish we could do more. I wish we could do it faster, but within the constraints of reality, Doug has done a tremendous job trying to move us, move us forward, and he certainly has my support, and I think, I hope, I hope that will be included on the list of, of reasons, reasons to do this and do, do more if we can in years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Next, Kenneth Fortino, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ken Fortino, and I'm a Farmville resident, and I just want to talk with you to echo, echo a lot of things that have already been said. There's three things that stand out to me as I think about this, and one is that I'm an educator myself, I'm faculty member at Longwood, and I really strongly value public education. I'm a product of public education, and I feel like a lot of, you know, my successes are due to that experience. And so to see that the schools are struggling, and I know that they're struggling, and I know that there's many challenges, but I think it's important that we support the schools because as they continue to struggle, it harms our students and it harms, you know, the financial, the social, and the civic lives of all those in the county, those of us in the county. The second thing I want to say is that, as was mentioned in the presentation, Prince Edward County has one of the lowest real estate tax rates in the Commonwealth, and I feel like that maintaining this distinction while the schools lack the resources that they need is inappropriate. And I thank the board for considering, you know, correcting that imbalance and moving us in a direction where we can have the resources that we need to supply our schools with what they're, what they need to succeed. And then finally, I'd like to say that supporting education in the children of this county, I think, is the responsibility of the county residents, and I think it's appropriate to ask us to do our part, to supply the resources that those schools need, and if we fulfill this responsibility, it will benefit the county financially and civically far, far into the future. And so again, I want to, you know, encourage the board and thank the board for considering this small tax increase to provide critical funding for the school improvement projects that are ready to begin. Our teachers and leaders at the school are diligently working to improve the conditions there, and as Justin mentioned, we are seeing improvements, but for them to succeed, they really need the support of the county and the people of the county and this board. And so I ask you to improve this small tax increase to fulfill our responsibilities to the education of the children of this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did we have anyone call in? Anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak at this time?
Sure.
Yes, sir. Please state your name and where you're from. Thank you.
Chapman Hood Frazier, I'm from Rice, and I'm also a professor in residence, working with the local schools, so I've been in the schools quite a bit, working with teachers, with students, and have been doing so for several years before that was on the school board. I'm really pleased to see that we have this, this tax increase in play, proposed, because I think that's something that's long overdue for, for our schools and what we need to, and we need that support. I have grandchildren in the school also, so that's one of my vested interests, but I also see how hard the teachers are working to try to bring things together to make the schools successful. I was also very pleased that we have a PTO that was established recently, and they had a gathering, and that was very successful as well. So we're seeing movement, we're seeing positive things beginning to happen, and I just wanted to lend my voice to support the proposed budget, and, and yes, is there more we can do? Absolutely. I'd love to see international backglow programs, I'd like to see more opportunities for students to be successful. I know we have this year a Centennial Scholar that's getting a full ride at JMU from the high school, and we have some very successful students. We also have a first-generation student who's, who's got a full scholarship. So we're seeing progress. I just would like to echo what, what Justin and some of the other members, Mr. Gee, said, so I just wanted to put my voice there behind it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah? Any board members have any comments, anything before we do? What'd you say? Any comments from the board before we close?
Yeah, I'd like to see some. I asked that those of you kind of looking at the 3 cents versus 1 cent, don't correlate that much with the project's spending, you know? We're going to have a total overall of the school, of the elementary school. It's, it's, it's an internal funding mechanism as much as anything else. It's not really representative of how many dollars we're spending on each project.
Thank you, Ken.
And Mr. Chairman, I would just like to make the comment. I thank all of you in the audience who came forward to support our budget. You know, we have not raised our taxes in quite a while, and in order for us to see growth, we have to raise those taxes at some point. So we thank you for coming out tonight and supporting our budget and our initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brian. I'd like to thank everyone also for your comments and coming out. It's a lot to consider for things that are going on in our county, surrounding, and as a board, I feel sure I can speak for everybody, we try to make sure we do a good job, and if you don't think we are, I want to hear from you. Please get in contact with us. Thank you, Ken, for coming.
Officially close the hearing, Mr. Chairman.
We'll, we'll close the public hearing at this time. Do we need to do a motion now?
The motion would be to recess until April 25th at 7:00 p.m.
So may.
Second? Yes, we have a motion, second. Harrison?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Destin?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Jury?
Before we recess, I want to make a motion that we have due a resolution for James Moore, who recently passed, I think it was Friday, last Friday. His funeral services will be Saturday at noon at the Prince Edward High School. So I'll make a motion that we submit a resolution on behalf of his tenure on the Board of Supervisors of Prince Edward County.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Do we follow through with this one first or finish the other?
Finish this one.
Finish this one.
All right. The motion, Phil.
Yes, sir.
All right. David?
Yes.
Jury?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Destin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Yes, my vote is yes. And for recess and jury, we left off with you.
I second it. Yes.
Okay. All right. We recess until April 25th at 7 o'clock. All right. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
How you doing, Cannon Watson? Good to see you. Yes, sir. How are you?
All right. Hey, hey. Yes, we're good. 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 Richmond.